That loop that we did, so I was reading, that was seven and a half miles, that one. I'm working on another one here that, so by the time we're all done, I think the whole crew that's reading will read like 22 miles. Or is it? Just because it loops as we're reading them. It's all on foot, so it takes a little while.
And it's all on foot, wait, then you'll get your steps here.
That's right, I need it. Oh. I should exit.
Well, it's too bad, my son doesn't closer, he's been racking up 30,000 steps a day.
My wife's been doing 15,000 or so a day, so.
He had this AI app on his phone that would always increase it with every day, and he went with for like 200 days, but got to 62,000 steps a day, all he did was walk.
And 10,000 is like five miles, so it gets crazy.
Yeah.
I don't want both of them.
All right, while we're on Zoom in just a few minutes, almost done with that last one.
Uh, Mark won't be joining us either.
Hold up. I liked his, many of his topics, yeah. It, and it is something we have to do is to look at all of those definitions and see what we can eliminate and.
Sharon, I think you probably got the email.
I'm not sure.
She's going out, all the big guns, clearing the whole committee and the consultants.
Why is she doing that? Does she think we're making changes?
Well, Sharon's a very good person. She used to be the, was it county planner?
Yeah.
And she's fantastic at writing grants. But.
Yes. I think there's probably some possessiveness in the document at this point.
Oh.
Yeah, all right, so. That's why I'm.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. Those hospital audiences before. Oh, Bill will not be here, maybe he'll speak.
Oh, okay.
Um, Steve's out of town and Bill has a cold.
Summer cold.
Well.
And my husband today.
Anybody.
Was at Blue Shop.
I got my food shop with a couple weeks ago, when I tried to get my milk shop, they said, well, we can't do it.
They wouldn't have the vaccine yet, no?
No, I should have been proactive an entire month ago before they next that old one.
You're gonna keep on. The old already.
My mom looked at COVID, COVID, um, right after Christmas, this past year. And my mom does not believe in the COVID shot, so she has never read it. She has diabetes, COPD, and a pacemaker, but would not get the COVID shot. And we, we both had it and she was like, she was like a mile cold. I was shocked, shock. I mean, happily shocked.
Right, right. CD. Hi.
Hello.
Hello, David.
Hello.
Oh, what? Get these back to eleven.
Did you sit over there so you were hidden by the camera? That's my spot.
I did not know there was a method to this CD.
Well.
You're gonna sleep down here.
Yes, yeah.
We used to set the button right up there which blocked me.
Oh.
I had no problem.
I don't know.
But, uh, I listened to the last meeting, somebody walked off with a cord, so they had to go away now.
I just had my eyes dilated, so.
Oh, yeah. You want to drive it?
No, I was just. It's not, it was actually hours ago, and it's still.
It's still.
Well, I was a specialist, so they were like really.
I was happy.
If you ask, they'll do what is called a light dilation.
They, they couldn't do that.
Oh.
They really needed to see the inside of their head.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for going on for putting this.
Oh, you won't.
Issue. Okay, um.
Does it work?
I have to like. I'm hoping that maybe.
Let's turn on the lights.
No, I'm gonna try it, but.
Can you put your glasses over there?
That's what I'm gonna have to do. There.
Are we just reading glasses?
Yeah.
I have a pair of polarized safety glasses.
Oh, wow.
With cheaters.
Well, you don't have to. There we go.
I haven't been able to find the cheaters in. No, I'll take that back. I may even order some online from, uh, someplace.
Well, the, uh.
Warby Parker?
Name it, no, no.
Zul?
It's not cheaters.com, it's.
Yeah, Peters, Peters?
Something like that.
Need a New York, or a, so anything.
Greater than two.
Ready class. Now, welcome.
Thanks. You can buy stuff online, like.
I, I have tried, but they wouldn't ship.
Right.
So. I just, I'll send it to my daughter and my mom.
I'd say that, I'd say that my brother and I will.
Oh, well, I went to the eye doctor for the first time in like 10 years, and she said that cheaters don't hurt your eyes. Well, so why would they mask it? It's money.
If the lights are it hits money grab.
Because the.
They can prescribe.
Otometry lobby, lobby for the bill.
All right. Where would people like to start?
At the Bay Street?
Paul's.
Hi, that's great.
Yeah.
Well, I was given a homework assignment to, uh, on the bottom of page one, where it just starts the definitions. There was a section down there, uh, talking about residential areas shall be kept free of incompatible and inharmonious uses. And we were struggling with that language. Yes.
Yep.
And so I did something, but it's pretty long.
So, would, um, would you want me to talk about what I did? So, okay, so, um, have you guys ever used like the word collaboration?
Is that like Google Docs?
Uh, I've never used that, but probably, it's basically you have one doc and then like you give each of the participants.
It's like a Google Doc.
Yeah, and then everybody can put their changes into the doc, so I've done that, but in a OneDrive, it's Microsoft.
Yeah.
Um, and then it will show everybody's comments or whatever you add.
With attribution to that.
Yes, and then, and then, um, we can discuss it as we go through, we can see all of it. So if you say one thing and you say another, you know, it's right there at that section that we're reviewing. And then I can go through like accept or reject the changes and kind of keep it all together rather than, oh, send me this, send me that, you know?
Agreed.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, are you just gonna send us an invitation?
Uh, I, I did, I said, first I sent it to Bruce just to make sure, and then yes, I will, I will copy the link and send it to you guys in the email, and then you'll all have access to it. And then you could put, but we can talk about your.
Give me a second now, four.
I have such a hard time at home, I have huge screens, so unfortunately, like, I don't even like. Just, it's not password protected, so obviously we want to keep that version of the document between us and for like somebody else could change it.
Right.
Off-aid seems very loud to me.
It does. Well, we got new batteries, maybe.
Okay, John, well. But, um. You want what is it?
I'm sorry?
Just want to enter that in later?
Oh, probably enter it in later, we might tweak it because it's, it's kind of long, okay? But instead of, uh, being kept free of incompatible and inharmonious uses, which is somewhat ambiguous, uh, I'm proposing the following, but looking for some further input. Residential areas shall be kept free of negative impacts from commercial, industrial, or other conflicting uses, which may include traffic, noise, odors, lighting, and lighting visual effects and the like, which may negatively impact the neighborhood aesthetic. I don't know if I need all of those examples.
But it's good to have some.
No, I, I like that, yeah, I actually, yeah.
Yeah, I think that sounds comfortable.
Okay, well, pop that into the document, we can look at it again.
I was expecting you to go on further.
Well, sorry to disappoint.
Okay.
What else?
Uh. So we have gotten to, uh, Alan, um, how far have we gotten in your document with changes?
Um, let me check my, here. I, for some reason, 191,4, I thought we had kind of gotten that far, six in my mind.
I just found it, so it goes, this excessive tree structure. I'll change.
Oh, okay, thank you. I really, I haven't been looking a lot at typos.
Sorry, it's, it's just the way my brain.
Perfect. I did do a bit of cleanup, there were a lot of things that were not in the right alphabetical order, so I kind of moved them in the right.
All right.
So 191?
Um. Well, that's what we were reviewing.
We were in 194 definitions.
Okay.
Yes, that was right, yeah.
Sorry.
And I think we had.
We changed the building definition.
Yes, and I put that in there.
Yeah. We had cannabis consumption allowance, see Article 3. Those. Uh, billboards. Uh, we talked about moving.
Billboards and signs.
To, uh, the included other signs, you know? So billboards, this AC signs.
Yeah, I meant to do that, I think I got sidetracked.
No, but. So ultimately though, when we talk about signs, when we say that signs shall not be greater than whatever, is it, is it written in such a way that billboards are exempt from those restrictions, or they are subject to those?
Subject right now.
Okay.
Uh. Under what's written there, a sign or a structure that directs attention to an idea, but doesn't say anything about signs.
So to me, like, a billboard is a sign, it's a type of sign, right? So they, they should be, they're kind of like synonyms, or they should be the same, I think, you know? But if somebody, if the intent of that document, I would almost remove billboard and just list it under signs, I think that would be the easiest thing, but if they're intending for somebody who thinks, doesn't think of it that way, and they're looking in that alphabetical list for billboards, you could just say C signs.
Correct.
So.
Well, in this, uh, which is.
In the Bible.
Bible. Billboards is C signs.
Oh, I got.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
What she said.
I would, I would believe, I would believe billboard.
Just reference to the.
They see something.
Yeah, because, yeah.
We do that. Um.
Maybe I should buy one of these.
What?
That's. Good call.
And what? They need the CD, it might be cheaper to get everywhere at CD.
What is it, the, a plan?
If I could get just the CD, they're right.
What's the, a planning?
That's what Kevin calls the, but, but I little bit this one off of eBay for $20, including the CD.
Oh.
That's why I didn't use the CD, and.
Yeah.
My, my laptop doesn't have a CD to use.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, they, I haven't, neither, I haven't.
Yeah, but I want to plug in.
External, yeah.
You'd want to move it more time. Um.
So I think one of the things that I don't know if, I don't know where we really are, but one of the things that I noticed that kind of wasn't in here, um, under dwelling, we have modular, and with, you know, how everybody's doing tiny homes these days? Should, I think we should add reference to tiny homes wherever it has like modular or mobile home or whatever. Because, you know, even like the, that treehouse place, those are like tiny homes, you know?
Well, I think that was sort of Mark's thinking, that he was just throwing out all of those words in his email that we should consider defining that, because as we go along and start to look at the, at the.
We're gonna have to add.
Yeah.
You know, I talked.
Because is that what we're supposed to be doing too, right, when we're reviewing this?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, I talked about, he says, you're not going. Close. That much is. No. Why don't I do that? I said, it will get closed when we send it to the board and they accept it.
And, and the whole document. Yeah, exactly.
So, as you go through, there's no big changes.
I also have, um, another comment about where the definition for garage, you asked me to add. Um, and there's, do we need to say, we just mean a person is a garage and not like a mechanic's garage? You mean, we need to make a distinction?
Like residential versus commercial?
Yes. And then there's also a reference to a garage apartment that says, um, that a garage apartment would be on top of a, I think it says personal, on top of a personal garage or something like that, but it could, an apartment could be on top of a, a commercial garage, you know?
Well, if you go down here to outside, excuse me, three or four, uh, apartments above maintenance garage.
Yeah, exactly, and so I think maybe we should make those distinctions in there.
I don't know where we stopped, uh, last time. I didn't park it.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Have we gotten to dwelling, modding?
I don't think we did, because I would have brought up the tiny house then, because I had that in.
Okay.
I'm gonna start with that.
Sure. Um. If attached one family dwelling unit with a minimum install installed minor dimension of 16 feet or more.
Yeah, and I have a question, like, what's, where does that come from? Like, I'm not, I didn't know what that was.
Apparently it was pre-existing because it didn't get highlighted and read.
Right, right, but that's also what prompted me to think about, oh, well, what about our tinys, you know, because.
But then how does, why does, uh, why does it have to be a minimum dimension of 16 feet if it's a, if it's a single wide, is it not a modular dwelling? Only double wides, if you will, are.
To me.
Modular ones, that doesn't make sense.
To me, well, maybe we need to find modular, like, better, um.
All right.
I'm already being there first.
Oh, yeah. A certain dwellings, if there's dwelling attached, well, apartment, bi-lateral, detached, apartment later. Uh, let's see. A building, a part of the building containing living, sleeping, housekeeping accommodations, and sanitary facilities for occupancy by one or more. Uh, another one, a building or structure were close to the road, designed for occupancy by one family for residential purposes, as a single house, keeping unit. No case shell, a motorhome, trailer, torch, auto-built chassis, jet, portable building be considered as well.
So none of those are considered.
So then, so a little house wouldn't, because a little house is usually on wheels.
Usually.
Well, all under. Let's see.
But if that's the case, then that could be an exception to that. They would say, you know, excluding these, but including a tiny house.
Yeah.
Or, which for that.
That's if they even have tinys.
I mean, because if you, if some people live in, in camps, like, I will have to, the people do. And not in an RV front, you know?
Right.
But we, I think our code says that you can't do that for more than so many weeks out of the month.
We don't have to, yeah. But sure, it will be listed as immovable.
Right.
So somebody did cross out the four purposes of this chapter, a double-wide mobile home is.
I think that was kids.
Okay.
Yes.
I still don't understand, when you say 16 feet, can't draw them.
But then your home would be manufactured.
It could be, but it could also be made by somebody.
Well, it's manufactured.
True, everything's manufactured then.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think what this is trying to say is modular, you know, like when you, you could get a, a, a big house and it's modular, it's shifted two pieces and then they attach it together on a foundation and.
Sue Bassett's house, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That came in two pieces on track and terms.
They're using column kit homes.
Yes.
Um, Doug was on the Bay Street, his house behind the Bay Street is a modular home, is a modular home.
Well, so then maybe it doesn't belong there, maybe.
Hey, Doug. Good to see you. Doug. You're, we've been early, we won't start till seven o'clock. This is just a work session. Well, let's unmute yourself.
So maybe we just keep dwelling modular kind of with that.
I think of the tiny houses, this is the tiny house from the tiny house society.
Okay.
And so they, they say there's two types of tiny houses, those on wheels legally considered an RV.
Uh, legally considered an RV, okay.
And then a tiny house on a foundation, they consider an accessory dwelling unit. Um, because oftentimes it's, you can't buy a piece of land and put a tiny hole on it.
Because it's under the, like, like here.
Yeah.
It's under the, uh, space requirements.
Yeah, so.
So do, but do we need to maybe just add a definition under dwelling, we have dwelling modular, dwelling multifamily, dwelling mobile home? I mean, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, we could say teen, teen tiny home.
Yeah.
And put the definition under tiny home.
Okay.
Or C also.
And it says that New York is not tiny house front.
That's probably true.
So there you go.
There are a few around here.
Yeah, my son has one, it's parked in the way back of his, like, he doesn't use it as well, but he, he built it a long time ago.
There was a old school bus that somebody cut the level of the roof out and added a second floor. This is parked down here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
It was in a parking lot. Okay, so, well. With that.
Awesome, I, I'm just adding a comment, you know, so I don't forget, I just said, um, add C tiny home and add a tiny home title definition.
Actually, we need to go back up a bit, uh, under the definition of dump. Uh, the yeah, a lot or land used primarily for the disposal by abandonment, burial, burning, any other means whatsoever, purpose of garbage, sewage, trash, wreckage, junk, discarded machinery, vehicles, or parts thereof, or waste material of any kind. Uh. So a question I've got is whether, what about recycling? Is if there was a recycling center, people, several among us would probably call it a dump.
Well, recycling center or would be in the industrial zone and have to have a.
Well, what if a person just started collecting recycling stuff and they said, no, it's not a dump, this is all for recycling? It's not trash, refuse, junk.
Mm-hmm. I'm saving all these beer cans to pick them in.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. By all outward appearances, that fits the definition dump. It's not a recycling center, you say, it's just a collection site.
Someone was driving by a bag, lost somebody's picnic truck, it had piled with plastic bag, school, plastic bottles. It wasn't secure.
So what do you think, um, do you think we should add something about not intended for recycling or? What, what's?
Well, including materials, uh, which may be recyclable.
Okay.
The definition is the first. I don't know, a lot of it. He's got two of them there. Who met James.
It almost looks like one was supposed to be deleted, the second one. And I can't tell, sure.
Which are you referring to?
Under dump, you know, there's dump, there's a dump, this is a red name.
Oh. That was not on his original. On his original, it says a lot of land used primarily for disposal. It doesn't have that.
That second one?
It's actually going with the original, what we had mentioned about the recycling materials. Uh could read it, they what exactly. Materials because that. You know, car batteries and.
Right, it could get. Wide variety, so it wasn't just getting tires, it could be. Under dwelling, I think we discussed before that we should, that would include. Short-term rental, I may ask him that as a question. Motel, hotel, rooming house, short-term rental or other accommodations used for more or less transient. Occupancy.
Um under dwelling.
Yes.
Uh motel hotel.
And then add short-term rental in that last sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, which one were you talking to? Add it where at the at the?
Toward the end of it lately of motel, hotel, rooming house, short-term rental or other accommodations. Do you see it under dwelling?
No, uh oh, okay, over here, sorry, yes, they do now.
Well, by the way, Mark is volunteered to. Write down.
Definitions for some of those.
What I was saying.
Great, yeah. First, you know the reason for dwelling group being. Three or more, but not more than nine.
But we've at that point between the part of the whole thing.
I was wondering if it meant like a a like a group home, you know, like for people that just got out of jail or if I don't know what it means, but like. You know, because the state might say or or a group home for people that are disabled.
Right.
And they have only a certain, you know, mental capacity and then once it exceeds that, it's too much for the carriers, I don't know that. But that's what I was thinking of then, but it's.
Sorry, I will talk.
Is that like a boarding house?
Yeah. Not certainly understand the reason for the differentiation between dwelling and dwelling units. Dwelling unit being a building or portion thereof providing complete housekeeping facilities for one family versus. Living quarters for one or more families. It's not certain of the distinction, reason for distinctions.
You have a mansion? And a caretaker's house? I I don't know.
I guess a dwelling unit that's used somewhere.
Yeah.
And that distinction is needed because it relates to the. Portion of a facility that's being used by one family or. Or then you're.
Okay, there's a little more to tweet. Definition like video, so it's a group of two or more. One family, two families, removal. Well, it's occupied a parcel of land and one ownership and having a yard or court. In common, but not including hotels.
What's that for?
That's a.
Plotting group, no.
Okay, that's my.
So. We'll get that again slowly, so Helen can catch that.
Yeah, let me just go back to my.
A group.
Wait, wait, I gotta find my model.
A group of two or more, one family, two family or multiple dwellings occupying a parcel of land and one ownership and having the yard or court in common, but not including hotels. You know, it's kind of like one of the the amarodex. There's a couple high-end places that have several. Cabs.
Like glamping, you know, like, but they're.
Yeah.
So are you then okay with dwelling unit as it is?
Yeah, it it will all come down to how does it get changed.
Right.
We have all these.
Yeah, right.
Not sure my family is highlighted in if if we're onto more.
Don't know what. We did what foul with that most of far my almost.
I had that too, but foul is listed elsewhere, but I don't know why you wouldn't combine them and just say. You know, add it onto the list.
Right.
Well, because sometimes you're you allow chickens that you don't allow.
No, we don't.
Boats. No, I'm saying some this in some.
In some.
Yes, so maybe that's why they keep them separate.
That's fine, um. We could put foul out there. See below. Let's see.
Fowl included below.
So approved, but not related to chickens, turkey, guinea hens, domestic dogs and domestic pigs. And we don't want giving out this back to anyone, obviously.
I just had three chicks this morning. Well, then who cares, but.
So. Now we're looking down past now, you know, we've got garage. Now, uh.
We're not doing floor area, I'm skipping.
Door.
Finished grade, floor area.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Did you have a question or?
No, no, I thought he was down to.
Oh.
I was confused where he was.
So he was cruising.
Okay.
In. Finished grade, before we get to floor area. In finished grade, then should we also. Reference the reader to the definition of basement? Which is different than.
And what's your concern?
Well, just just so the reader doesn't only look at finished grade, finished grade is the elevation at which the finished surface of the surrounding lot intersects with the walls or supports of a building or other structure. If the line of an intersection is not reasonably horizontal, the finished grade in computing type of buildings and other structures for other purposes shall be the average elevation of all finished grade elevations around the corridor or the building, except that this average shall not exceed one half of the floor to ceiling pipe. So. That. No, never mind, strike that.
Okay.
Strike that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It seemed to make sense somewhere along the line.
That's okay, I was trying to follow your.
Okay.
Your logic.
That's. Fowl should probably also reference farm animals, right? Do you also farm any? Did we have a definition for garage?
Bruce sent me one.
Yeah.
Uh building or structure or part thereof used to be designed to be used for parking and storing vehicles.
Which I. Oh, yeah.
Now, now, maybe the question, how do we. Differentiate between. Like garage.
Yeah.
First of garage.
Yeah.
We we need two separate definitions.
No.
Garage comma residential and garage comma commercial.
Right. Here we've got garage private. Detached accessible portion of the building housing, the automobile, the octopus, and the furnace, but not the washing.
So Kevin has a automobile repair. Definition.
Right.
In Article three. So does it make sense to reference? That definition of garage being a residential garage to see also. Is automobile repair or?
Oh, yeah, but what if you have a commercial. Garage that you're not doing automobile repair.
Um yeah, do you like just painting, maybe you're doing upholstery.
Yeah.
I think if you say commercial garage. Is that more encompassing as opposed like resident ones are residential, literally we don't resident.
Oh, it's Bruce Terry's big new bill, is that a garage?
The barn.
Left the barn. Yes.
It's a little bit over one year.
Yes. So we want to have total body. Define. We even should. But not including. Garages. Now, including commercial garages?
I think so. And then maybe we could, but then it's gonna get long. Not including commercial garages, like I E.
Automobile repair.
Yeah, auto repair, wine shop.
Run.
I guess fifty boat repair too, right?
Yeah. So are we gonna leave that as a private garage? Because we have. Apartments above. Taxite. Or is that considered?
Strike private.
Yeah.
So you want me to say private, does that?
No, it has private in it. Oh, I would get rid of the word.
Extra.
Above a garage.
Where is that?
It's under garage apartment.
And so second one below a tubular.
Yeah, a structure above a private garage in which provision is made for one dwelling unit.
I'm just making these like additions in the comments because otherwise I'd have to go back to edit and it makes real small. We already talked about the tiny house thing, I I also had a question on. Well, maybe we're not there yet, because are we gonna go through everyone or only if there's marks on them?
I think if we have a question about women.
Right.
If we don't, we'll skip.
Okay.
We're optionals.
That seems straightforward.
What would that compute to in this height of the building? Do you remember that one down on? What was it, Second Street? What I want to put that hoopla that's leading us to walk around it.
That would suggest that that wouldn't be included in the height of the building, but. I don't think we.
You uh we would we would agree with that, non-habitable. Space.
What's the definition of non-habitable?
Yeah, because you could still go in it, I mean, to me. That means you can't live in it, what if you still go in it and walk through it? Is that what you mean? Is that what you mean?
Well, yeah, my house has a third story.
Right.
And I actually couldn't. Put a bed. And a mini refrigerator and hot pot. And make it habitable.
But, but they're.
Better know short term.
They're excluding the chimney. Or other non-habitable space, sorry. That's if you had an area above an elevator. Shaft.
Hmm.
For example.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be.
Correct.
Happen. Uh.
Well. It came down to the square footage on that. Get into. That.
Oh, is that right? That would shook out?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't even mention any square feet. Even. Are you saying we should add square feet?
No, because we're talking about height of the building.
If we go. Residential work, not be total of thirty-two feet.
Right.
Now, other than this, you know. You, which in the, uh, if you had a decorative.
Go below.
Go below.
Or a spire. Or. Could you put a spire on top of your, of your house? Okay?
Maybe.
They could, okay, but would it not be considered part of the height of the building?
Personally, I would, but.
Yes.
Like a cross on top.
It's not, you can't add in the hot spots.
But a storage room is considered a non-habitable space, so you could. Make it really tall.
Well. I think. We. Places that we had on the mechanic room. When they had the. Less than six foot.
And why does it say, the very last sentence, it said. You know, uh, for a new surveyed height, which will be measured from. And be considered to the. Surveyed height of the lot. Well, it's under height of the building, so now why are you saying height of the lot?
Well, because they're, they're talking about the starting point for the measurement of the height. Of the bill. So they start off by saying the height of the building is measured from the initial surveyed height of the lot. Okay, and then they go on to say, I, I think actually this, this probably doesn't belong in definition. It probably belongs somewhere in, in the discussion of. Building pipe. In the code. More than it does in the definition.
Or just leave, or we could leave the definition of the height of the building here and then move the rest of it as the code.
Yes.
That's what.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Oh, sorry. We're on the same, we're on the same wavelength.
Right.
My brain's a little slow today.
That's okay. I understand that.
Okay, so we're gonna leave the definition here and move the rest to.
Yeah, discussion of the building pipe where that is in the code.
Must be one until industrial.
Includes all aspects of a business. Plus consisting. Of the conversion of material into an end product. It's a sentence structure works too well, but. But I. Just, what, what does the book, good book say about industrial?
So, so if you're, if you're doing a poultry in your garage, in your residential garage, is that considered industrial?
It's commercial. If. Wouldn't be allowed if you were in a.
L C R.
That's.
Maybe allowable.
That's like commercial.
Yeah, if you're in L C R.
Yeah, but this is like industrial. I mean, I, this doesn't.
Well, what this one has, it says industrial, see also manufacturing. Uh, related or concerning or arising from the assembly, application, finishing, manufacturing, packaging. Or processing of goods or mineral extraction.
That one makes more sense. Yeah, that's more clear. Can we do that one instead? Because this one doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, you're gonna have to, uh, say it in slowly, please.
Still players, but.
Page, C page, whatever.
On, on the breadstick, I talked so. Of relating or concerning or arising from the assembly.
Okay.
Of concerning or arising from.
Application, finishing, manufacturing. Packaging or processing of goods. Or mineral extraction. One few times I love to slow down on my speech.
Well, it did work. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for typing, because I, I couldn't.
Yeah, I don't even know how you read on your phone. I'd be blind. You know, it's, it was training.
You know, you can't take your big computer into the.
It's tough to do that.
Uh. On kennel, I wouldn't. Change your word in a minute.
By kennel?
Right. Any place at which there are kept four or more. Animals.
Yeah, but is that a kennel then?
Yeah, cat kennel. Or turkey.
Then you'd have to change in any number of animals.
Or.
Uh. More dogs or cats.
Domestic animals.
But then you're gonna get pot-bellied pigs.
There're not a lot more of them.
Not if they're domesticated.
Uh, let's go with, uh, dogs or cats, because I don't want to.
That's, well, that's why I.
And why does it say, um. Oh, nevermind, I read it wrong.
Did you scratch lawn or mat?
Alan? I switched it. I, I moved it up because it.
Oh, it was.
Wrong alphabetical.
I was thinking, yeah, which one? Lawn or mat, you just. Moved it out. I have a question on a lot. The, the last sentence in that definition.
Yeah.
A lot shall abut or be accessible from a public or private street. Really? Does it have to be? Couldn't there be a lot?
Right.
That's.
We were right away.
Yeah.
So do you, how do you wanna?
I, I would just strike that last line. Saying a lot.
Yeah.
Needs to be accessible from a level to a private street.
What if I wanted to have a lot of privacy?
Right.
Get trees from that. So.
Coverage. Lot depth.
There was one, um, concerning lot where it contradicted it in another area and it had to do with waterfront.
Yeah, lot frontage.
Yeah.
A lot line that coincides with a street line. Or waterfront. Right?
Yeah. Yes, and in another area, it's like, well, the, if you have a waterfront, the back of your house is actually in the front. And said that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I ran across that. I don't know where it was.
Yeah, I have to comment in there somewhere.
Well, I still, it says, um, under lot through. It says comer lot.
I would say the corner.
Oh, a comer lot.
A comer lot.
Well, where is the technicals? We didn't merge, did you merge your two, your whole?
Um, no. We. That three, sorry. The back to front is all merged, Bob at that. So that's a through lot, yes. Which makes street numbers very difficult.
Well, I get it. Let's stop here.
Okay.
I think that's good spot to stop. And. We'll give this four minutes before we start the regular reading.
Look, I'm gonna put start here.
Yes. Very good. To these days. I think I knew because I think I wasn't here.
What are you doing for two? Okay.
Can't leave it be, can we part two of the secret?
Yes.
Okay, you're being this part. Nothing so.
No. Do you want part one back?
Sure. Other two? Now, we're taking this one. It's already written up on the field. Okay, it is.
Yes. I have.
Seven o'clock. Yes. We go. Advertise. A meeting. Finds Wayne County. On the village website. More about forum. Follow us to order. Our first action is to review the minutes of September second.
I have a question.
Okay.
Under final site plan review of Brandon Martin. Yes. One, two, the third paragraph. It says that we have a writing all of the planning board's concerns. And I didn't say that I wanted things completed. Just that we have all of planning board's concerns, including grading and landscaping, if we need to reference that in a future. Point. You see where I I mean.
I, okay. It says Janine said we have a plan, we haven't writing all the planning board's concerns and she wants to.
Yeah, so get rid of, and she wants to see some of these things completed. I didn't say that. We have all the writing, all of the planning board's concerns, including grading and landscaping. If we need to reference.
Okay.
These requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
I wasn't familiar with the term. But I heard it the way you did, when the 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 mutton windows?
Yeah, I never have it up before.
I I Googled something and something else came up. It's, I think it's a. Is it minted?
The lentil?
Well, there's mountain, M U N T.
M U N.
Yeah, mountain.
Month.
Month, M U N T I N.
That's it, yes.
Instead of mountain?
Instead of mustard.
Mountain tops?
Although, that's exactly what I heard.
Well, that's what I heard too, the stuff.
Okay, so it's M U N T I N.
Yes.
Okay. And the warning for the.
And with those changes, I will move that we supplement as revised.
And I will second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All the lost division, the minutes are approved.
Thank you, hold up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Okay. Our first. Action is a special use permit for Bruce Carey. We had originally took this to the zoning board of the Kelly Planning Board who stepped in. Asked that we sent to them first, but we need to, we'll send the motion to send it to. The zoning board and add a new motion to send it to the.
County planning.
Kelly, but before we do that, we need to complete. The uh, torque turn seeker. The verses are completed this portion. Number one, will the proposed. Action create? A material conflict with an adopted land use? Plan or zoning regulations?
No, or small impact.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land?
Yes.
A moderate impact may occur?
Will the proposed action impair the character quality of the existing community?
A moderate impact may occur?
Will we? Will the proposed action have?
You're debating now.
Well, I was just thinking through, but no, I'm okay with.
Okay, okay.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics across the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result?
Back to number three again.
Hmm?
Can you go back to number three?
Three?
What we said?
Will the proposed action impair the character?
Moderate.
Quality of existing community may have a moderate. Yeah. You're adding the shots in there.
But what if that's an improvement instead of an impact?
No, it's impact. It's.
Yeah, that's why I'm not good, but it's not good or bad. It's just.
It's not good or bad.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure, will mass transit, biking or walkway?
Well, it would impact the level of traffic.
Well. I'm thinking it would be a small.
Yeah, yes.
So.
Yeah.
My.
Fourteen isn't already. Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonable or available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No, or small.
Number seven. Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No, or small.
Public or private wastewater treatment facilities?
No, or small.
Will the proposed action impair the character of quality of important historic archaeological? Uh. Yeah, historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? There will be so, so impact to me, to restore outside the building. Which is a historic building. Or at least it's an old building.
Right, but I don't think it's designated historic.
I don't think it is either, but the construction of the new buildings could. Impair the aesthetics. Question. Small or model? Well.
Alan, what are you doing?
Yeah, I mean. I would, I think it's small.
Do you agree?
I would say small.
Nope. If it gets built out to the extent that is proposed, I think it could become moderate. If it doesn't get built out that to that extent, it's probably small. But since the proposal includes. The full buildout. I guess I would answer this being modern. But that's just. One person.
Well, I will include that in section three, which I had to set up.
That. Oh, that explanation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you're gonna.
Uh, I.
Check both boxes?
They won't let me.
They won't just spit the baby?
So I will. Notate all that in my uh.
So you won't check either box? You'll just say food, C, C three?
C, C section three.
Yeah. Got it.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example given, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor and farm?
Depends on how many trees we're gonna lose.
Uh, well, it turns out the trees that you wanted to save were on their property.
Are on the town, is it the towns?
On the neighbors' properties?
Well, oh, well, that's easy then. They can keep them. They can keep them. So I guess it was. So I guess.
No. I guess it's.
No, or small, yeah.
No, or small.
Well, if you uh. Walk down by there, it was the uh. Property lines very well marked right now.
Okay, good.
Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential? For erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
I would say small. Because it includes.
Well. Both of the gene war there and the drainage that lies the information of the site plan.
Yeah. I'd say small.
Will both action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Or small.
Well, I'll finish.
So, thank you.
Now, I need two motions one at a time, although you draw a recommendation to the zoning board. And one to send it to the Kelly.
Well, I'll move that we we send the motion of September second twenty twenty five. To. Send a special permit review matter to the zoning board. And said to make that. Oh, no, can we stop there? Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Uh, motions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? In our opposition. Motion is passed. Uh, next, please also reference that we're sending the C S C.
I'll move that we. Send the application of Bruce Carey for a special use permit. Uh. For. I think it's eighty-four forty-three.
Yes.
Street. To the county planning board for its review along with the seeker.
Forum that was completed at tonight's board meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We're in opposition. It's passed. You'll be going to the county, which we revise. Fourth Wednesday of the month of the twenty-fourth. So.
Does their review tend to take place on one hearing? Hmm? Does their review tend to take place all in one hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And from there, it'll come back to us for our next meeting. After. It, uh, uh, not more October year. On the sixth, then, at that point, we'll see what the county said and go from there.
Right.
Okay. All right, our next one.
It's the Wayne County zoning board.
Wayne County planning.
Planning.
Oh.
Okay, our next one is for Steve Halligan. Step on up. Well, just drag it over or sit in one of his chairs.
Okay. So I was here on the seventh of July and uh, we made some progress. I've got the uh. Snap plans ready to go, which I did get to Kevin. I don't know. I sent him PDFs. I don't know if you had those or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for being so, thank you for playing.
Okay. So this is eighty-three fifty-nine South Shore and uh, we plan to demolish the building and rebuilt. Uh. The new structure is gonna be about eighteen fifty square feet. It's gonna have a basement, uh, be three bedrooms. Uh, upstairs to one bedroom downstairs and there'll be a walkout basement, which primarily will be used for storage. Um. The uh, uh, elevations, uh, setbacks, I believe all meet code. I've been open pretty thoroughly with Kevin. Um, and um, uh, I've got a good team in place. The general contractor is gonna be uh, Bill Gruber from New York. Uh, and he does work for me uh, this past year and the subcontractors are great. Empire Records is gonna do the demo. Uh, Grandpa's gonna do the excavation and uh, uh, this was done by community engineering there in Fairport. They, they, they've done a nice job. I've had the asbestos survey. I've got the demo permit. Everything is in order. I'm ready to go uh, and I'm here to ask for the building permit. Uh, I am waiting for R G and E to do their part of shutting the gas downs.
That's always a good thing.
I think I'm close. I've been at it since July.
I looked over the plans. I think they're. You know, as you mentioned in your email, lighter changes, but uh, still very attractive.
Hmm. I think they're very nice, very functional. It's, it's, I think it's nicely sized for the size of the plot. The neighbors, I've been talking to them, they're very amenable and comfortable with the whole thing, so I think all that's good.
We got a couple other new houses.
What's that?
There's a couple.
Little new houses.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If I'm reading it correctly, Steve, the, the elevation's twenty-eight feet.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I was confused by the uh. By the. Plot plan, which includes a uh. A shadowed location footprint of the old.
It did, yes, yes.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at, and it says chimney and, and.
Yeah.
Looking at the new plans, of course, no chimneys.
Yeah.
So I was confused and I was writing Kevin crazy, so uh.
And that is a little confusing when you first look at it.
It is, yeah, yeah. But I.
Yeah.
I found it.
Yeah.
Found the guy.
I just take a marker and draw it out, yeah.
It looks like it'll be a handsome, a handsome change to uh, South Shore from the old.
It'll be nice.
Freedom.
Yeah, I love to preserve that spearmint green one way or the other. I'm not sure how you can do it. Uh. Uh, I do attend to side it and I'm not sure I can get a, a green net color, but it's gonna landmark for a lot of years.
It has, yeah. Especially at the sailing. With sail over to the green cottons.
When Dad, when Dad bought the place, he was gonna paint it and uh, the junior sailing program folks got talking to him and he ended up falling in love with it. So.
I don't have any questions, Chuck, that's uh.
I don't have.
It's a handsome uh, sound place.
You don't, well, it isn't, wasn't that bad on the stage?
In a state.
In the state. Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the final site plan review of eight-three-five-nine South Shore Road. Construct a twenty-seven by forty-foot single family structure with. An eleven by eighteen-foot front entry and a twenty-seven by sixteen-foot deck for submitted plans.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? They're in opposition. Congratulations.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, that's the one you can.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, Kevin's, Kevin's been great to work with.
We, we hear that a lot.
Yeah, really accessible and uh.
But it's not many meters.
What's that? Well, I, I understand, yeah. I know, I know. He's pulled in a couple of them, but he's, he's been great.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along.
Yeah, do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you, nice folks.
All right. Bob, I note what you were on there earlier. Are you still there? Do you have them?
I just spoke to him on the phone to make sure he was getting on. He said he'd be right back on, so um, he should be on any second.
Hey, Kevin, while you're on, the screen keeps going out intermittently.
Is it the ones uh, on the east side?
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay, I have a call in to Adam to fix that. I'm not sure what's going on with that one.
All right, thank you. I, I assume somebody knew.
I assume somebody knew, but.
Yeah, I saw it last time I was on. There's a couple different iPhones that just, I don't know if they just joined or not. I'm not sure if one of them is Bob Straubing.
I'll wait in the room, Bob, uh. Anybody get down to the dressing yet?
No. I was down a while that week.
We'll see, yeah, yeah.
I had two great dances with you. Unfortunately, I, I don't know where you are.
Yeah, I said I don't.
But I, I, if I can travel to New Orleans, and Ziegler's in Chicago.
Yeah.
Or down the street.
Uh, Bob just joined. He's on now.
I'm here.
Sorry to make you wait.
No, that's all right. That's okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Okay. Uh. Personally, I thought it was a very attractive fence. Great. Questions? Uh, now, Bob, there's a notation on the graph paper. It says pool code. Are you planning on coming back for a pool?
Um, ask me again. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, in the notations on your uh, sketch here, uh, I guess Chris, one of Chris's drew it. It's three row, black, eleven and four foot high pool code.
Pool as in swimming pool.
Oh, no, there's not gonna be a pool. No. That's why we're going with the four feet. Um, there's no plans for a pool.
Well, four feet's a minimal if you can have.
Right.
Okay. Any, um, questions for Bob?
Uh, you, that was my only one.
Okay, well, if there aren't any questions, we get a motion.
I move that we accept the fence review for eight-three-three-zero Lake Street to construct a four-foot fence per plot ordering.
I'll second you.
All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There are no opposition. Motion is passed. Congratulations, Bob. It's really your new fence.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for being patient.
You bet. No problem. Thank you.
As you may have seen in that email, I told Jared Long that we were in our team building, had a work session at six, so we may not get back to the one ninety until after.
Okay.
Yeah, I got him. Yeah, she's bringing everybody. She says she's coming ready. To get the last thing.
Okay.
But, um, I put them at a work session. We gotta stop and set up.
Okay.
Right?
Uh, your guys' camera went out, just a heads up. I don't know if, uh, someone bumped it or what happened there. Doesn't matter though.
It says Zoom is not.
Oh, okay.
All right, all right, let's, uh, let's adjourn, and then we can just turn it off.
I move that we adjourn C things meeting.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor adjourn, say aye.
You guys will have to end it from, uh, your side. And if it still says not responding or something, just do Ctrl, Alt, Delete, and then, uh, end the task. But have a good night, guys.